Praise God. Praise God, praise God. Praise God. Praise God. Praise God, everyone. Praise God, God. Have we had live on, have we had live on YouTube? And let me check a little bit, then we can continue. Today, I am privileged to have my friend Immaculate here. And I know, and I do believe that you're gonna be blessed. Yeah, it's, 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 it's working well. And so, yes, we thank God for this wonderful and beautiful day that he has given unto us. It's a wonderful morning, and I hope and I do believe that each and every one of us are glad to see a new day. Because our life is worth living just simply because our Redeemer lives. And so, we ought to be glad that it's a new day. He leadeth me, he leadeth me by his own hand. He leadeth me, his faithful follower I will be. Oh, by his hand, he leadeth me. He leadeth me, he leadeth me by his own hand. He leadeth me, his faithful follower I will be. Oh, by his hand, he leadeth me. Immaculate, Rabera. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
I am very glad, I am very happy. And so, thank you very much for being here. And thank you for doing your best to be here.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I got to, I got to meet with Rabera, it was twenty thirteen August. That in Aga, and then it was a week before twenty ninth. So that's around twenty second or something of the sort. Our twenty third. Ladies with numbers. Then we say, I remember the day.
And time and place.
And so, we got to meet twenty thirteen, and it has been seventy years of friendship that I thank God for it. And so, Immaculate, I'll grant you the privilege of you sharing how we met. First of all, how you saw me.
Wow, chalo. Pray God.
Amen.
The name is Immaculate Rabera. And I met Charles G in twenty thirteen August, as he said. It was my first day in campus. We were at KCB Bank to pay our school fees. And so, that's how we met. And then, the next time we met, it's in class, and then I'm like, ah, I saw this guy somewhere else. So, yeah, and we were doing the same, not the same course, but the same faculty. And we could share most of the lectures. And yeah, so we, it was like a connection at first meetup, so we became friends. Yeah.
I have seen what you have done. You have, I wanted to say at first sight. And so, yes, it was in KCB, she saw me, I didn't see her. And then, for me, it was the twenty nine, I saw her, she didn't see me. And so, and so, today, we're gonna talk about something that what catches your eyes. You see, as in, we live, we live in a world that a lot of things are usually around us, but not everything usually catches our eyes. And so, the usual that particular thing that catches your eyes and usually draws you to it, and initially drawn to it. Because usually feeling as if there's a connection towards it. And so, today, we're gonna talk about divinity in that sometimes we ought to always be aware, we always to, we ought to always to be aware, we always supposed to be keen of the things that, of the things that are around us, of what caught your eyes, in that does God wants you to pursue after it? Because in this life, there's usually something that you're meant to pursue after. And so, for me, it was on the twenty nine, at that, yes, we were registering, and then I saw her. Then later, all it was in class, then, then you're, you're like, ah, you know, sometimes people are like, ah, she must be my friend, she must be my friend. In that, some very fortunately, I love in that, making things to happen. Making things to happen, not just letting, letting something go. And so, Immaculate, how has, how has your journey of salvation been?
It's, okay, my journey of salvation has been, I could say, a process, a learning process, a growing process. Every day, it's a different day, we take every day at a time. And I got there in first year. Actually, it's Charles who introduced me to Christian Union. I'm a Catholic by birth, my parents are Catholic, my whole family. So, when I went to campus, I had roommates, Nellie, Joyce, and Miriam. The three of them used to go to CU, they could go to Catholic, Catholic is outside school. So, I had to work all alone to church at that gate. Then this day, they told me, ah, Charles told me, you could come to Christian Union. Then I said, hmm, why not? Let me just go. So, I got there, you know, Catholic, you're not used to praying out loud. Then you, you hear people praying out loud, and then you're like, aye. You know, it's quite judgmental, but then, yeah, it was back then. So, the first day was like, I was like, ah, okay, church in mission, let's go home. Glad the next time, we went with my roommate, and then, that was the first semester. When I went home for the holiday, I attended service thirty first, on thirty first, starting first of twenty fourteen. It was actually in Kitangela. So, the pastor called guys to give their lives to Christ, and I just went, I don't know how, like, I just went and I gave my life to Christ. I, I can't say it's easy. It's been there, those moments, there are low moment, there are high moment. There are moments that you feel like you can't go on, because you've done, you've made mistakes, done a lot of things that God would approve of. But then, that's where grace comes in, and that grace has kept me going up to this far. Yeah, so I would say, it's a growing process, and I'm still growing, and I'm loving the growth. Yeah, so vision is sweet.
Yeah, yeah, I used to go alone, but what, I bet I, I worked, I went with you sometimes. They would meet, we shared to follow Immaculate to Catholic and see how things are running there. And so, in, you, you got to study at Asombi Girls, and so, why you serving in Asombi Girls?
In Asombi Girls is a Catholic, is a mission school. So, in Asombi, we used to go to church in the morning, like, there was no serving at a personal level. Apart from visiting the priest, the priest's house, together with my friend Beth, we were like, going there to eat good food. Yeah, on Sundays, but serving, just maybe cleaning the church, yeah, cleaning the church on Saturdays. But there was no, like, I would say, like, I was in the choir or something, no, just cleaning the church.
Okay, okay, and also, also, in, what about in campus, did you used to serve?
Yes, in campus, when I joined now Christian Union, again, Charles G introduced me to Ebenezer Ministry. At first, I wanted to join, personally, I wanted to join our children ministry, because I have, I have a love for kids, like, I love children, little human beings. So, Charles G was in a ministry that is called Ebenezer, and he tells me, he invites me for a service, so I go there. And then, those people are welcoming, they are themselves, they are all over the place, you know? And then, I'm like, yeah, okay, these people can still be serving God, and at the same time, enjoying the stay there. So, I became part of them, I was, I was singing. Sometimes, I could act, and by the grace of God, I served as a music director. Because my voice in the morning is really bad, so Charles G, we don't sing in the morning. Yeah, so, yeah. I served as a music director.
I'll be singing today, that I do.
So, and then, I served in some committees in Christian Union. Bukafit, there is Anza Fit, which welcomes first years, it was a really good moment to serve. We could cook uji, we could laugh, we could be with those, the ones who have joined us, like, immediately, the first years, and guide them through, they are those who could call you mom, and you feel like you have a responsibility. So, it was a good time to, to serve and be there, yeah.
Oh, that's wonderful, and Immaculate, their home place is in Kisi. I, I hear you know the MCA, Women's Rep in that area, we have been in meetings. And Gaza rings, eh? Big, big ones.
Yes, yes, oh my God. Yeah, I've been in a few meetings with the MCA and the Women's Rep. But mainly, it's because of the youth, when they call youth meetings, and then, we, we just go there to listen and see where we can help the community, yeah.
Yeah, and also, for you, at times, you go for, to visit the people in hospital, what usually draws you to that? In that, like, I'll, I'll come tomorrow and see you, I'll come tomorrow and see you, in that, how did that come into be?
Okay, as I said earlier, I have a love for children, and not just children, but even people who are in need, someone who needs my help. So, maybe something which is a little bit funny, when I was very young, I think four years old, my, my mom used to read for me stories. We had the Bible, the children Bible, which has pictures, and you could see, like, what happened, what was happening, a story told in pictures. So, there's this story of no, no, is it no or no, or, yeah, depends on where you went to school. So, I see this, I see this story of the, and then, there is a baby sinking, a mother holding a baby, and they are sinking, almost sinking during the, during the flood. So, I tell my mom, we need to help this baby, so I could cry and say, why would God let a small baby like that perish in the flood? Like a baby, I mean, there's nothing but that they've done. So, I, I actually ended up tearing the part, that part of that Bible, because I didn't want to see it, I didn't want to see that baby, like, almost sinking. I would say, oh, we're gonna let them sink, but for the baby, mom, let's just save the baby, so I tore that part. As a way that I have saved the baby, I was small, so I couldn't understand these things. Then I grew up, and I, I had that, that gift of mercy, like, showing mercy towards people. So, during, first forward, during my holidays, even as in high school or in campus, I could go to Tabaka Mission Hospital, it's the hospital near home, and visit the scene, and see how they are doing, especially the children ward, and play with them, and then, this time, I went there, and then I saw this baby. She was a girl, and she, she, I was told she is HIV positive, and her parents had passed on from HIV. So, I'm there, and then, I just feel so bad, like, it's just a baby, she got it from her parents, so she doesn't really deserve to go through that. So, I just got milk for her, and then, I said, I'll go back the next day and see her. So, I went home and told my mom about it, and then, they are the traditional, traditional bogga, traditional, how do you call bogga? Traditional vegetables that people are supposed to take when, when they are, have low immunity. So, I went and baked them and cooked that morning, and carried them to the hospital. When I reached there, the bed was empty, and the baby had passed on. Yes, her name was Dorin Nyaboke. She had passed on, and that's how we lost her. I felt so bad, I felt as if we were related, and I had lost someone who was close to me. But then, I just thought that every moment that we have to spend with someone, or when you feel like you need to do something for someone, just do it. At that same point, because tomorrow may never come, tomorrow may never come. So, yeah, I I look forward to touching lives, like, that's what I would love to do in this life.
Yeah, in that, We Shall Overcome, We Shall Overcome, that's a movie I bet you have watched, of, of, he told me, I look like that guy. And they laughed. Yes, and so, we are living in a, in a society where a lot of things is in chaos, a lot of things is in messes, and then, in that, we always want to make a difference. And so, what's that one thing, what's, what, what do you, what do you usually feel are from the within that each and every one of us can do? What usually from you, in that when you're seeing me, when you're seeing someone else, and then, you're seeing someone who is in need, in that what usually, in that you being between, in that seeing people, someone like me, then seeing someone who's needy, and then you, there between, what usually saying that I can do to reach the person, in that, what can we all do?
Um, what, what all of us can do, okay, I know we cannot help everyone. Like, personally, I cannot help everyone, but everyone can help someone. So, every opportunity that is presented to us, it doesn't matter how, it doesn't matter where, it doesn't matter when, even paying bus fare for someone, just that fifty bob or one hundred, it goes a long way. Even just giving, walking maybe in town and seeing someone begging for food, just buying for them food, it goes a long way. It doesn't really matter what you do, it doesn't matter how you touch someone's life, as long as you touch their lives. Even sharing about someone, let's say, it's life of today, and you share with your friends, that there's this friend of mine who holds life of the day. You've touched his life indirectly, doesn't have to be financially, we don't have to touch people's lives financially. We can touch their lives through sharing what they do, inspiring others, and, yeah, teaching people that you don't have to be perfect to help people. We use our imperfections and our flaws to help, to help us grow and others grow in the same, in a similar manner. And through, maybe I would say something, there is a group of individuals, a charity group, it's called Live Love Share, Charles G is part of it. Yes, we are out here with an aim of love, sharing love, sharing love. It's, it's a group that gives me the, the joy to move, go on with life. These individuals, they have sacrificed themselves to support this course, and not everyone would support everything that, like, some things, it has to come from the heart, charity has to come from the heart. It's not something that you can wake up and just do. It has to be a bath at heart, and then you feel like you need to help someone, so those people, wherever you are, LLS guys, I appreciate you so much. You've been a great support, and may God bless you, let's keep on touching lives and sharing love in this, in little ways and big ways. All are the same, their main agenda is to touch life once or at a time.
Yeah, Live Love Share, so how did it all begin? Live Love Share, did you ever see yourself with a group, did you ever see yourself, like, mobilizing people, telling people, come, let us go and visit these people, come, let us do this? In that, how did it all begin, and did you ever see yourself as being, bringing it and having the group and having a family?
Yeah, the family indeed. So, I, I never thought I would actually have, like, lead a group of charity individuals. But I always wanted to have our children, some of my own, I've always wanted that since I was young, just to bring vulnerable children together and take care of them. But then, God had his own way, so over the holiday in twenty seventeen, I was, I was selling bags. I was selling bags later on, wherever you are, hi, he was my business partner, and Charles G too came through for this cause. Hey, Charles, you start to talk by your name. Anyway, so I was selling bags, they are called Queen Bags, yes, so these Queen Bags, I could pick them in town and then sell to guys online. So, this day, I go to town, and then, I put my bags, some kid comes and says she wants, he wants donations for their children's home. So, I look at the performer, and then I see fifty bob, twenty bob, one hundred bob, seventy bob, and I'm like, what, will this really help them? So, I took a photo of that performer and said, I'll call the, the owner, the manager, I would say. So, I went home that day, it was on a Saturday. Yeah, it was on a Sa- Saturday, no, it was on a Sunday. So, I called the number, it was, the, the number you're calling is no longer in service. I called again, it's no longer in service, I'm like, how can this happen, and they need help? So, I said, I'll just go to that place, to Karibangi, it was called Karibangi, Karibangi Children's Home. So, I said, I'll go there and look for this Karibangi Children's Home. So, the next day, my, I, I'll go and call my friends, they were supposed to go to a stadium, is it Stadium or Nairobi? I think Nairobi Stadium, to check on some event that was happening there. So, I told them, Ole, Ole and Frank, both are my friends. So, I told them, if we're going, if I'm taking you there, then you have to take me to Karibangi, so it was a deal. I take them to, to stadium, I can't remember if it's stadium or what. I take them to stadium, and then, we go to Karibangi. So, we go there, we find food, my friends love food, hey, they eat food, and then, we even forget who are supposed to go to Karibangi. So, it's five P M, and we haven't left. We get some celebs there, Philip, Philip and who, and I met some guy, photographer, so we meet some friends, we take selfies, celebs. Then we leave at five, I think five. Then we leave at five, I think five thirty. We are going to Karibangi. It's late, send Karibangi. You know, we're not sure if it's safe. Go there, we look for Karibangi Children's Home. It is not there. There's a cut, a cut, a mission. Uh cut link there where sisters uh stay, nuns. So they tell us there's no Karibangi Children's Home. I tell my friends, we can't go back like that. Let's just look for any children's home around and then we can just visit them. So we look around and then we find uh outreach children's home. Outreach Children's Home, we meet uh the mum there and then we tell her about how the story. Then she's like, oh, God led you here. Thank you so much for coming. We thank God for you. So I tell this mum, this was out of faith, honestly, cause I didn't have money. I didn't have a group. L L S wasn't existing. So I just tell this mum, we are coming on Sunday to visit you guys. That's in a week's time. Remember, I don't have a group of people. I don't have money. And I just have two friends, Ole and Frank, who have come with me here and we are telling them, we're coming on Sunday. So that day I go home and then I I write a text, a a text message and then I forward to groups, to my friends. I went forward to uh pastor illness to envoy. Then guys came through, you know, they just sent money. They sent money to my account. They didn't even doubt. They didn't even doubt like I would eat the money or something. They sent the money to my phone number. And and on Wednesday, that was on fifteenth, March twenty seventeen, we formed the group. A group like we called it, we called it Visit Karibangi, Visit Outreach Karibangi, called it like that for the first time. So people joined the group, they were invited by their friends, like that, like that. And on Sunday, that morning, when we were going for the visit, we were twenty-three in number. The people who turned up for the visit were twenty-three. And the money that we had collected was was close to fifteen thousand. Can't remember the exact figure, but it was close to fifteen thousand. We did shopping, we took it there. These people, they were happy. They were very happy. And that's when you you realize that when. God planned something, it is not for human to, like, you can't even uh fathom the. The sovereignty of God. He's, he just does things his way and. They they turn out to be the best, the unplanned ones. And after the visits. Okay, we cooked, we had fun, we played with those kids. And after the visit, we said no one is supposed to leave the group and that's how it became L L S. And L L S has been living, we've had visits to Home of Disabilities. Nakuru Emmanuel Offage, uh in Nairobi, in Nairobi here, we've visited um. Uh the outreach again, we visited uh uh how do you call it? Hope and Mass Children's Home, there is uh, how do you call it, there is. Oh my God, there are very many. There's one in Omoja, there is Rui Rui Rehabilitation Centre, there is Kasarani. Kasarani uh Home of Elderly. Yeah, and we owe it all to God. We can't say it's by our might. And even the latest deed that we did, which is Make Me Smile, guys came through, you guys came through, guys from WhatsApp, guys from Facebook, guys from Instagram. They donated food stamps, we partnered with Jabulani Youth for Transformation and it was a blessing. It was a blessing. So that's how it came to happen. That's how we have grown to this far. We are now sixty in number, sixty.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. And also, uh how do you know that it's what God wants you to do? What usually tells you that this is what I know, what in that what usually makes you feel as if God is like, do this, do this, do this?
I, it's something that I don't struggle to do, something that's that's. Keeps me alive. It's something that, it's something that gives me peace. It's the fulfillment of seeing someone else. Have the thing that they lack, like have it. It's it's my joy to have a community where we share. Where we don't, we don't let people lack, don't let people go homeless, we don't let people uh strain. To have. To, oh my God, we don't let people struggle to meet the basic needs. Yeah, that is like it's some that I don't, I would love to do. Cause I don't, I don't believe in just living life and dying. I would love to live an impact. And living an impact is through touching the lives of these people, the young kids, the elderly. Anyone, the homeless, the street children, people with disabilities. They need us, they need you and me to be there for them. Yeah.
And also in that, also uh I saw uh from uh from my end of knowing Immaculate in that. Uh God is, uh uh God has gotten to bring people in her life who uh she gets to passionately, who she gets to work with. And that is usually the thing about doing something that's divine. Whenever we are in doing something that's not of us, not of our thinking, not of our making, in that uh which is heavily, which is of God. Usually that connection, divine connection, and I usually at the right place, usually with the right people, usually with the right resources. And I usually with the right, if you continue on following the lead of God. Because this friend comes along, then this friend is like, I can do this, I can do website for you, I can do photography for you. That's the most photography. And then this other guy that I can like, uh having someone like Ole, having someone like Frank, having someone like. I like who, uh Faith, uh Faith, having something like Sital, uh Diana, I mean that, yeah. That there are a lot of people in that you're seeing, it it's any one of them in that. Later on, when we arise and take our position, then everyone else in our life will have meaning to us. You see, sometimes we there, sometimes we may live a life of knowing, knowing, why is this person in my life? Why is this person in my life? Why is this person in my life? If you live that kind of life of never knowing of why someone is in your life, you haven't yet realized of your purpose, you haven't yet realized of why you're here or not. But once you come to the realization of, and also Steve, I don't want you to ask me a question of. And 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 so once you come to the realization of who you are, then you then you shall find, you shall get to realize that, that by the way, I can tell this person to do this for me. And also Jidra and Sam and uh eh there are a number of people faith, um eh faith. In that there are a number of people who as in, I I'm also part of L L S, then we see the. Patrick, uh we see the discussion actually going on here. In that as the name are coming. And so once we, once we we arise to a position, then we shall get to realize. That this is why I met this person, this is why I met this person, this is why I met this person. Because in that it all makes sense to you, in that your life, each and every morning when you wake up. You're like, by the way, I was made to have to meet this person. And so that is surely I think to each and every one of us, don't despise anyone. In that, don't look down upon anyone, in that you can never know whom you need of uh in your, in your, in your next stage. And also, um uh Immaculate uh siblings uh like uh Thomas and Peter, Peter is the first one, then Thomas. Uh in that them, them being there for her and then also encouraging her. Uh if I'm not wrong, if I'm not wrong, it's Thomas who who recommended most to you. Coming of the sort in that Thomas wasn't able to come for the meeting and then he told Mos to come for the meeting. And then Mos has been committed to it, Mos has been committed to the cause. And also in that that divine planning, in that sometimes maybe you're like, why did you not come? Why did you not come? But who else came? In that the other person who came, that was the right person to be there. That was the right person to be there. Because it's, it was at the beginning, it was like, everything was falling into place. And also I remember during our fa- that first visit, in that when we are outside, the day was over. Uh people usually call it déjà vu, in that déjà vu in the sense that, in that when I was outside there, then I was like, I was supposed to be here, I was supposed to be here. And so that initially like, this thing is divine, this thing is, in that what she started was supposed to be here. In that sometimes also Immaculate has gone to have dreams and and. And the reason I have asked her, how do you know this is what you are supposed to be doing? She just talked about fulfillment, she just talked about, uh she feel fulfilled, she feel that's her purpose. And also another thing is usually about the dreams that we get, the dreams that we get, they usually like aligning us, they usually like. Uh in that what you dream, she has ever had a dream, then that I want ended up in that particular area, then she's like, why I was supposed to be here? And so that's usually the thing about divinity. Divinity is usually like um God's, God's inter- intervention into her, into. It's usually like heaven invading earth. Uh divi- divinity is usually like heaven invading earth in that that which is of God coming upon man. And so that we can live and also we are Immaculate got to do, uh uh warm the streets, uh then clean up on a birthday. I Immaculate like uh on a birthday, she rather celebrate it with the, with the kids than after it is. And so, and so uh yeah, that which, that which uh like um. And so uh the story of Immaculate in that what, uh what uh what she feels is a body, what she feel as is, she's been called to eat in that being drunk by it. Is a little children helping the needy in that looking, also making follow-up in that that's very commendable. In that, yes, we made the visit, but how are they doing in this time of COVID? How are they doing tomorrow? How will it be next month? In that always doing that follow-up, then having a wonderful team that she's working with, having a wonderful team. That she's working with and uh that she gets to uh uh that she gets to meet together, online meeting them. What should we do? What's our next move? And then also uh Jubal, you're that day fourteen, Jubalani.
Yeah.
Eh?
Yeah, Jabulani.
Yeah, Jabulani and also getting to partner with them, in that everything like falling into place, then you're like, wow. In that, don't despise your humble beginning and that's uh uh Jabulani, it's my friend Johannes, uh I told him one day at Akua Park. I'll also get to hosting, I'll also get to hosting in that. Uh for me, I thank every friend who is in Immaculate's life, in that they have played one role or another. In uh in helping her believe in that which God has placed in her, in pursuing that which the Lord has entrusted to her. In that, it it becomes easier when you're having a team that's like, why is there silence here? In that, let's do this, let's do this. And then like uh people recommending, let's go to this place, let's go and visit this place, in that have such such kind of team. And also may God bless you, Immaculate, for healing to the core, also for sacrificing and laying laying everything about you down. So that you can be able to reach out to other people who are hurting, who are in despair, so as to put a smiling there. I saw uh what uh what what has been uh in the, in your work for, in your work of L L S, what has that, what has happened that like mind blew? In that, wow, this is so wonderful. Uh there are a number of them, so I'll give you this opportunity. What are the things that have happened? Uh because of you being in a particular place, recommending someone, something of those sorts? Okay, I've got my question. You're a smart girl.
Oh. Okay, hmm, in L L S, me being in L L S. Wow, things that have happened. There are many. I don't know the specific one that you want.
The any.
Okay. Hmm, huh, well, when I've been in L L S. There are a lot of things that are, that have happened through touching lives. And there is this, I'm going to share one. There is this time that we were doing Warm the Streets in in town, in Nairobi. And then we met this guy, his name is Kebbo, he 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 calls himself Kebbo Cute. So Kebbo Cute, he raps, he does rap. So he raps for us and then we record, just uh we just record. And then we share on our platforms, like we we're just amazed by the talent. And then we hear that uh King Kaka, the artist, is also looking for this guy. So there there was a group that was formed and then we. We were partnering with another, another organization that was also looking for him. We tried, we get him with with the one of us from L L S who. Played a very vital role in finding Kebbo Cute, uh that is Wellington Moya. He's also a photographer, Wellington, hi. So he goes to town in Jivangi and looks for him and finds him and then calls me and tells me I've found Kebbo Cute. Then we come together, we go to town, then we meet King Kaka. And King Kaka um wants to support this guy. We take him to a rehab uh rescue center in Gong. Uh then he's, he goes to stay there for some time, he could run away. We went to visit him with a friend. From Raising Hearts Foundation. His name is um Kisha, Kisha. So we went to visit him, then we were told that some time he had tried to run away. But then the guy who stays, who hosts, who hosts them at that home, tried to look for him and brought him back. So Kebbo Cute has been there for some time. We were trying to look for for. For something for him to do, but then he was told he needs to get away the medicine from his mind, his system. So that he can uh go back to school, cause he left him twelve seven, I guess. He comes from Naruk. So I think that was uh something that was amazing, something that happened in a. In a a way that we didn't expect. We were just sharing love with street kids. We didn't know that it would go to that extent. And we hope that when he's okay, King Kaka will be able to help him nurture his talent and uh. Be able to sustain himself in this Nairobi. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, good, hmm. And and also, it's good, and also precious Jewel, eh 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 she's also Linda. Eh who had the, and Victor, yes, Victor is the name I was trying to remember. And Victor has also sacrificed, is in. And also, I saw, I saw, uh one more, uh two more things, uh one, your lowest moment, then to the party shot.
My lowest moment. Sorry, I don't have Corona.
You cannot have and I'm hosting.
So, my lowest moment is. Oh God, it's when um I can't, I can't be able to, to be there for people. When um my schedule and all that. When I feel like I'm going away from what, what God wants me to do, when I feel like. Something else is taking my life, like something else, it could be work, it could be anything else that is taking. My life more than than what I would love to do. I feel so terrible. I feel so constantly tired. I feel so low. And then I withdraw myself. And these are the moments that you don't even look forward to the next day. Because you're not creating impact. These are the moments that you, I just feel like uh I don't want to die. Because I I haven't really lived my purpose. I haven't uh reached out to as many souls as I could, I haven't, I haven't touched people's lives. Like, those are my low moments, moments that I can't do what, what I love doing. Helping, reaching out, visiting the needy, talking to survivors of rape, just encouraging people. Yeah.
And so, what's your party shot?
Oh, my party shot. Thank you so much for hosting me here. Charles G, you've been a great, great, great friend. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to more years of our friendship. On twenty-third, so it's gonna be seven years anniversary. Yes, that uh, I'm really grateful for the friendship. This is Karibangi. Yeah, that was Karibangi, the first, the very first home that we visited. This one, this is the very first home that we visited in twenty thirteen, in twenty seventeen, sorry. So I'm really grateful to God for this chance to to minister to others and have these people. As a great support system. And I'm praying that wherever they are, L L S people, you're amazing, you're great, may God bless you. I'm requesting each one of us out there to. Touch lives, share the little that you have. It could be very minute, you could see that it can't really help someone. But it's the little things that we do that greatly, greatly matter. You never know, that could be, you could be the only person who is going to help that that person in need. We'd be going through town and seeing people begging and saying, maybe they are con people, they have been employed to be there. But just do what you have to do and go your way. Tenda weh man nda zako, usi. Singwa diakusi fia, just do what you have to do and go your way. You can follow us on our social media pages, uh at the L L S group. The L L S group in uh Instagram. You can follow us on our social media pages, uh at the L L S group, the L L S group in uh Instagram. On Facebook, it's Live Love Share, yeah, those are the only platforms that we have for now. The L L S group in Instagram and Live Love Share on Facebook. You guys are amazing, Charles, you keep doing what you do, you are touching lives too in a way that you can never imagine. He has a lot of friends, Charles has a lot of friends. And the fact that he befriend anyone, anyone that comes, he's like, no, no judgment to like anyone. Let's be friends like that, it's a good thing, Charles, keep doing what you do, that is uh that is what God, what God called you to do and I'm happy that you are living your life, you are, you are enjoying what you do. That's amazing, everyone out there, please do what you love to do, find that one thing that you love doing, that one thing that you can die for and live for at the same time and pursue it wholeheartedly. Bye.
Right, also at my end, uh thank you very much, uh everyone of you for watching. And also just like you to realize that divinity is real in that it's not a, it's not a matter of you having resources, it's not a matter of you having money, it's all about you just pursue it, just start wherever you are able to start. Just begin it and then God, our God is faithful, in that God will never, uh for those of whom trust in the Lord shall never be put to shame, in that God will never make you feel ashamed, in that like for Immaculate, she talks my faith, we are coming on this Sunday. And then she went, sent message, in that how you relate with people is very important, like Pastor Aneswagoye, in that supporting them. And every other person who did support her, in that believing in who she is, in that her integrity, in that knowing uh this lady, in that that usuality, um that usually is something that's very important in that when maybe for a start, I call you, I ask you for for something in that you'll first, uh you first ask yourself who's Charles? In that, does he call people, does he be good to people, then if he's good, you'll help, if he's a con man, you're like, no, I don't have it, I don't have it. And so how we relate with people in that we count in our tomorrow, how we have people, how we uh relate with people in our tomorrow. And also Immaculate, she has been faithful to God, I don't know how she ended up singing, and then for me, I left her in C U at another fellowship. And then, and then coming back to see you, reading, she's reading praise song, worship song, then I'm like, hey, so you can sing. In that there are things that as we continue on working with God, as we continue on living a life for God, God continue on revealing to us who we are, what you're made to do, what you're made to be, who you're made to be, that's usually the beautiful thing about salvation. Salvation is a gift to us to make us realize that we can be a gift to other people. And so let each and every one of us appreciate the gift of salvation so that you can be able to live a life of being a gift to other people. I thank you, I like you, the poet you've told me you're watching and everyone else who's watching, thank you very much. In that I'm looking forward to hosting other people who can share their story so that we can all be able to know that there's someone out there who's starting off small, who started off small, who's doing great things. So also us, we can, we can be encouraged to other people, so thank you very much, Immaculate for being here. And I learned that you believe it's necessary indeed, and so I'm gonna be live on Facebook from around ten fifty to share somewhat. Then later on, at two, we'll have, we'll have sing today, a live on YouTube, and so uh today program. So I hope that, so Immaculate, so Shalom, Shalom, our viewers in YouTube. At the next time, may God bless you and keep you, salvation is a gift, make us be gifts to other people, be blessed.